I'm calling this meeting of the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Father Phil, if you would mind coming forward.
Let us pray. God of our fathers, whose almighty hand has led this nation through seasons of peace and great prosperity, as well as times of strife and great turmoil. We acknowledge our needs in these days for your guidance, protection, and wisdom. You have given to this free land the opportunity to serve our neighbors through all levels of government. May we always treasure those rights and freedoms that come not from government but are those inalienable rights given to us by your hand. We acknowledge our dependence on your grace and ask that your spirit guide this body to the end that debate and decisions be for the betterment of everyone in our community. This we pray to the honor and glory of your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Next item on our agenda would be the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion on that? Commissioner Johnson, you are recognized.
I move to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
I.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is going to be public comments. I know that there are a number of you here who are here to comment possibly on a specific issue. You're certainly welcome to comment either now or later. I would just recommend that the comments be made at the time we take the matter up. That way, any comments you have would be during our discussion and possibly more impactful. That said, I'm going to open up the floor for any comments from the public. When you come forward, I would appreciate it if you would kind of queue up so I can make sure that I don't leave anybody off. When you come up to speak, make sure that you've pushed the button. There will be a green light at the base of the microphone. State your name and then proceed. So that's kind of how we will go forward. Is there anybody here who would like to comment on any issues that are important to them? Seeing none. Next on the agenda are ceremonial matters. We have one listed. That'd be recognition of the Civic Academy graduates. Please proceed.
Good evening. Deetta Jacobs, administrative services officer. I have had the pleasure of hosting the Civic Academy for the last six weeks. And during that time, we have met at various locations and we have talked about topics ranging from the general overview of government to dollars and cents, parks and leisure, judicial, county development, and how to get more involved. We initially hoped to have a class of 20. However, that was not to be. And quite frankly, it worked out better to have a small group to start with. We ended up with eight citizens who completed the classes during our first session. This core group of individuals have demonstrated dedication and passion for making a difference in our community and in assisting us in building a robust program. And along those lines, I'd like to introduce Chuck DeFarkas, who is going to represent some of our participants, and he has a few words to say.
Thank you. Being the representative for the First Civics Academy, I'm going to ask my fellow members to stand up. Thank you. Speaking on their behalf, there was a lot of feedback that I gathered from them. So I'm going to give you some quotes that were given to me. I learned so much. Deetta was amazing. Exceeded my expectations. Appreciated the extensive amount of detailed information. All speakers were knowledgeable about their work. A highlight was their excitement, professionalism, and transparency of all presenters. The class believes the hours, the numbers of classes, the changing venues was very good. Next academy should be held in October. Current academy members should become ambassadors to help promote the program. What we did like about the First Academy was everything. If you were a presenter for the class, please stand up. Thank you.
Before we go forward with the presentation of the certificates of achievement, would you please, because we mentioned was made that the next class is in October, I would hate to not take advantage of the large group of people we have here, the large group of citizens.
Could you go through the process of if there's anyone here who would like to participate in future efforts of this sort, how they would go about it, as long as we have something of a captive audience?
Absolutely. Let's take advantage of this captive audience. So, we are planning another Civic Academy in the fall of this year. I don't know if it'll be October, maybe September, so that we can gear up for that wonderful tax season and senior tax relief program. So, if you are interested in participating in the Civic Academy, please go onto our website. We will open up the applications when it gets a little bit closer to the time of the Civic Academy, and then we will go through those and notify you if we receive your application, and we'll have a better idea of what the dates are. We'll put that all out on our website, so you'll know the dates of the week, where we'll have them, and the hours. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and present a certificate to each one of the graduates, and then we will have a group picture. Is that the procedure?
Yes, please.
Very well. Thank you.
Chuck DeFarkas. And if I could have all of the participants come back up here for a group picture with all of the commissioners, please.
Once again, I would encourage any citizen who is in interest in learning more about county government to sign up with this program, either for the fall session or for a future one. Do keep it in mind, I think it's a great way. Those of you who are here are certainly interested in being involved in county government and being aware of what's going on. I think this would be a great tool for you to be able to participate to a larger degree if you so choose. With that, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are seven items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is Resolution 2024-159, approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of May 4th to May 10th. There are a total of 263 invoices for a total amount of $961,340.69. Resolution 2024-158 is approving the 2024 revocable event license for the annual Julia Warriors run. Resolution 2024-157, approving a cooperative purchase service agreement for term and supply for the electrical energy power generator equipment with Foley Equipment Company. Resolution 2024-160 is approving a memorandum of understanding between the North Kansas City School District and the County of Clay for the 2024-25 school year resource deputies. Resolution 2024-161, approving a capital project encumbrance request and contract software and GPS tracking devices. Resolution 2024-162, approve service order for GPS tracking for the highway department vehicles and equipment from Verizon. And 2024-164, approving an RFP for professional services contract with McGrath Human Resources Group for a classification and compensation study.
Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Are there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
I.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on is our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-163. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-163 is approving a conditional use permit with Optimum Group, Recreation Plus Entertainment, and Director Jones is here to provide information about this project.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So we have an application for a conditional use permit for a recreational facility. Got the property pulled up here on the screen. I'm going to try to draw if I can. This is the subject property right there. It is approximately three acres. It's Zone C2, commercial zoning, and it's been zoned that way since 2005. It's unplatted. It is one lot and currently has no structures. The proposal is to build a 14,000-square-foot building, a parking lot with approximately 95 spaces. There would be some stormwater infrastructure included as well. And it's designed to be like a training or volleyball facility. So I'll show you an interior layout here in a minute. But there will be volleyball courts, court rentals, possible tournaments, and the applicant included a business plan that was included with your transmittal that gives much more detail, and the applicant can provide additional detail tonight as well. Here's the interior layout. So you see in red, those are the two courts. The area in green is the workout area, and there are a few offices, restrooms, and a concession area. So let's talk about the surrounding area, because this is a unique area. So this is the subject parcel right here. City of Liberty is all this gray shaded area to the east. City of Kansas City is to the south and west. You can see Liberty North High School located to the south as well. So most of this area in Liberty was recently annexed and is part of a proposed mixed-use large-scale development called Montage. And then in the unincorporated side, this is a subdivision that was platted in 2008 called Legacy Park that has a private sewer system, and we'll talk about that more here in a minute. So let's talk about the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. The comprehensive plan tells us this is in the urban services tier because of its proximity to the city of Kansas City and city of Liberty. The intent of the urban services tier is to promote urban development compatible with long-range growth plans of cities. So we reached out to Kansas City and Liberty, and we're going to talk about those comments here in a minute. For the urban services tier, the non-residential uses include recreation and limited commercial. So staff believes that this fits the area due to that large development inside city limits of Liberty, the limited commercial and recreation in the urban services tier, and that we have not received objection from either Kansas City or Liberty. These six criteria that you see on your screen are the standard criteria for any conditional use permit. The burden of proof is on the applicant to show those criteria have been addressed. Let's talk about uses. Since it's already Zone C2, there are some uses that would be allowed without any conditional use permit or special use. There's a use table in Chapter 6 of the Land Development Code that shows every use for every zoning district. I wanted to give you an idea of some permitted uses that could be allowed just by building permit. A daycare, a church, a bar lounge, a convenience store, a restaurant. All of those are permitted by right and could be done on this lot with just a building permit and stormwater plan as well. So as I stated, we reached out to the city of Liberty really early on in the process, and they came back with some comments. They commented that there was lack of a traffic study. Since then, the applicant has completed a traffic analysis, which was done by a traffic engineer and reviewed by the county on-call engineer, who agreed with the findings in that traffic study. Liberty also had concerns about a commercial use on a septic system. Since that initial comment, it was determined that they're able to connect on to the Legacy Park sewer system. So we're not adding a new septic system for this use. They also had concerns about the proximity of the parking lot and building to the road to make sure that we could expand those roads in the future if needed. So we added a condition to allow MoDOT and Highway Department to approve those setback locations for the buildings. As I stated, the traffic analysis was completed. There were a couple recommendations, including cutting back brush and a berm. So if you're sitting at the stoplight at 112th facing east and you're looking north on A Highway, they want that brush and the berm cut back to improve that site distance. And then also there on 112th, the recommendation was to move the stop bar closer to A Highway, which would also improve the site distance. Now, that stop bar is within MoDOT right-of-way, so we're trying to work with them to see if they will move that stop bar. As I stated, the proposal is to hook this into the Legacy Park system. The applicant would be responsible for installing a pre-treatment system on their parcel. It would be pre-treated, then pumped to the Legacy Park system, where it'd be treated again, and then it would go out the outfall with the Legacy Park system. That system is managed by Lake Area Wastewater, which is a utility service that's permitted through the state. We published this case in the newspaper. We posted a sign on-site, and we sent 52 letters to adjacent property owners. We did not receive any objections from outside agencies, but we did include MoDOT, the Highway Department, the Health Department, the Water District, and the Carney Fire District in the discussion with this case. There were several conditions that the Fire District wanted added, and we did add those to the condition list. We received comments and opposition at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting from neighbors. Those included questions regarding the sewer connection, property value concerns, and concern about how visible the structures would be from Legacy Park to the north. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval with 14 conditions. The applicant has agreed to those conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission did change a couple of the conditions. They changed the timeframe from 10 years to 15 years for the CUP, and they required that the driveway location be a minimum of 220 feet from that A Highway intersection. Originally, Highway had made a comment that it should be 100 feet. MoDOT said it should be 220, so they changed it to match the 220 MoDOT comment. But they did vote six to zero to approve this use. I know that's a lot of information. Really quick, there was much more information in the staff report that was part of the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Kip, I noted that under the permitted uses for C2 zoning, it does list parks and recreation. So I guess my question is, since this appears to be for a recreational purpose, for what reason is a CUP required?
So my interpretation was that would be for a, like a county park or a public park, not a private-run, commercial business.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. A couple of questions. One, the driveway, is that on A Highway or is that on 112th Street?
112th Street.
So just next to the septic site there?
Yes, you can see this, that's the private sewer system. Driveway would be in this area.
Right across from Roosterville on the corner there. What, I saw there's some questions came up about the sewer. I can tell you right now, some of the neighbors have complained about the smell coming from that existing sewer system. Is there any concerns about that, overloading that even more?
So my understanding is this is going to, actually by adding this, it's going to help with the upgrades that are occurring at the system, but I have not received complaints of the smell. Did reach out to the state, do not have, we have not been made aware of any issues with this system.
And you said a traffic study was done? And I didn't see the traffic study, but what does that say about the impact on 112th Street?
So yeah, the traffic study was attached to the report. Basically, the, and I'm just summarizing here, the proposed use did not warrant any improvements on 112th according to the traffic study. And we did have the county on-call engineer review that. He agreed. The recommendations were to cut back the brush, that berm that I talked about, to improve that site distance, and then moving that stop bar closer to A Highway.
So can you zoom out to the picture that shows the different jurisdictions? There you have it. Okay, so 112th Street there, you can see Kansas City in the brown on 112th Street to the, as I'm looking at, to the left. So I don't know if you're aware of this, so Kansas City is planning improving all of that, all of 112th Street in Kansas City. That green area is county. Kansas City will not be improving that. So where it goes from Kansas City to the county and right up to that driveway, is there anything at all that's going to change there, or is it going to stay the same?
No, the only thing that could possibly change is that stop bar being a little closer to A Highway.
Okay, and one of the reasons I think that stop bar is, I could be wrong, but the reason why that stop bar is further back is because those traveling northbound on A Highway, making a left on 112th Street, if that stop bar is further up, it makes it difficult to make a left-hand turn there. Does that make sense?
It does.
Am I right about that at all, or is that?
I am by far nowhere near a traffic engineer. That's why we're going to rely, we're going to present this to MoDOT, and they will make that determination as to whether that can be moved closer. That was just the recommendation that the traffic engineer made.
Yeah, I've always thought that stop sign was too far back, but then I realized if you inch out too much further, then you're blocking the people making a left-hand turn from coming very fast northbound A Highway to westbound 112th. And then how long is construction supposed to take for this project? Do you know?
That would be a better question for the applicant.
Is he here?
Yes, sir.
About how long do you think it'll take to build this?
Oh, excuse me. You need to come forward and identify yourself for the audio recordings, and then certainly answer the question as you see fit.
Hi, I'm Jared Smith, the applicant here. I'm informed that the construction could take anywhere from six to 12 months.
Okay.
I am unsure as to when it would start, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and then my last comment, and this isn't for you, this is probably for Kip or anybody else. I know we follow the law in terms of notifications and how far out we notify. What's it, 1,000 feet or something like that?
Yes, sir.
You know, I really would have liked to have seen on this scenario, because everything west of A Highway and 112th, aside of Legacy Park, besides Legacy Park, is all country. All those properties are 15, 20 acres plus, and so none of them were notified of this. There was a sign out that they could see when they drove by. I would like to have seen them notified, just because we're, there's so much happening east of A Highway that Liberty is going to, the annexed part of that property, that's going to be a huge development there. And then we have this other piece going in, when it's really, a lot of people bought on that 112th Street because that's country to them, and we're encroaching more and more. I just wish there would have been a little bit more notification to them. I'm not sure how many of them, I did send out a, I sent out some information to some of them folks that I could, but you know, just saying, just letting you know that, there's nothing we can change about that now. I said, when it's country like that, I wish it would go a little bit further, because you're really, you're really talking, 1,000 feet doesn't even touch that first property in the green there, let alone anything else further down. So just throwing that out.
Yeah, and I would add that we did present that to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a possible revision, and at that point, which was earlier, I believe this year, or late last year, there was not a recommendation to increase that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Withington?
Did this traffic study only take into account current traffic and not potential future traffic with that 10,000-person development?
No, they included the extra use of this facility.
Okay. I read the traffic study, but I must have missed that. So yeah, no, I want to make a motion that we approve 2024-163.
Motion's been made for the approval of 2024-163. You may proceed if you have further comments. Commissioner Lawson, I believe you were seeking recognition next.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to ask, they are definitely going to do the berm work that, where they're going to move the.
That is a condition, and the condition states that the Clay County Highway Department has to approve that work before we would, you know, approve it.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson, I thought that when we were talking about changes in planning and zoning, that we made the recommendation to change that from 1,000 feet, didn't we?
Go put your mic on. You may, oop, I'm sorry, let me get back over here. You may proceed.
Actually, I thought it was increased to 1,000 feet. I can't remember. Can you?
It's, so it's been 1,000 feet. So when we, when I came to County Commission, you wanted the Planning and Zoning Commission to relook at that, which we did, and their recommendation was not to change it.
Well, I thought we'd agreed to change it, because just like you're saying, it really isn't impactful when they do it just 1,000 feet. That's nothing. And especially when you get out into the country. So I'd like to just go on record saying that let's look at that again and make a strong suggestion that we change that so that we do, we're more inclusive with everybody that is in the area.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I think one of the issues is not every situation is the same. You know, 1,000 feet in some areas could include a lot of folks.
Yeah.
Whereas in other areas, it could include one house.
Yeah.
So I don't know if one size fits all, but certainly in this situation, that's why I say I wish it would have gone a little further. Maybe in a more densely packed area, 1,000 feet might work, but the country's a little different, but just my two cents.
Any further questions, Mr. Jones? If the applicant would like to come back to the microphone and then make any comments that you would care to make? I mean, you don't have to, but I want to give you the opportunity to speak. Okay.
Just click through this here, Kip. All right, good. I just, just real quickly, I just want to tell you guys about who we are really fast so you know not just what's going in, but who's putting it in there. My name is Jared Smith, teacher in the district, been a resident of the county for 30 years. My partners are all residents of the county. Tessa and I, skip ahead here, Tessa and I started this optimum volleyball club to help focus more in the Northland, to appeal to the Northland kids. If you guys aren't familiar with the club volleyball scene, there's tons If you guys aren't familiar with the club volleyball scene, there's tons and tons out south in South Kansas City, and we lose a lot of those kids to that area of the city. And it's not just a, something that we're losing, but it puts a burden on those families that have to travel, have to pay the extra money, the time, kids are practicing past 10:00 PM out south, and having to drive all the way back and getting home at 11 o'clock, midnight, stuff like that. We, we are doing our best to provide a premier-quality club at a good price, and that's gonna be the main tenet of this new building. The gym piece is a gym that I started years ago with my brother Derek and our partner Greg. We've, we've kind of been a staple in the community, I would say, for 13, 14 years now, and we kind of fill the gap in, in sports where, you know, kids are, kids are competing at higher levels, and I don't want to get into a debate on if it's too much, or whatever that is, because that's certainly an issue, but we just provide a service, I think, for, for families and kids, where we can help increase not just sports performance or athletic performance, but confidence, mental health, and we're just a, we're just a good, safe home for kids to come work out, excuse me, and, and just feel, I mean, I would say feel special, right? Because so many, like I just, like I just alluded to, a lot of kids are competing, it's getting real competitive out there, and we're just filling the gap that I think is necessary. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna skip over to this piece, because we kind of talked about this. I do have a testimony from a Legacy Park resident, as you can see there, you probably maybe already read through this, but their point is much of what I just said, that people are leaving the Northland and going out south, and he would like to have something local for his kids to, to, to take advantage of. These are some concepts, or conceptual renderings of what we're looking to do. Again, conceptual, so nothing's set in stone, but this is, this is, this would be the look of what we're trying to achieve. And I do have some questions here, but if, I'm gonna pass over those for the sake of time, but just allow you guys to ask any questions that you might have. As I said before, there are testimonials, I believe, in what you received from Kip, but I also have a couple of our athletes here that would like to speak after me.
Thank you very much. As someone who had a daughter who played volleyball in high school, I can tell you that it is an intense sport. She's a little under five foot tall, which is rather short for a volleyball player.
She's got a spot on the floor, though.
However, she made up for it in intensity, and I guess what I'd like to say is that I'm, I'm glad to see that we are giving our youth here in Clay County the opportunity to participate in these kinds of sports, because they are indeed character-building in addition to so many other benefits, but I'm always discouraged to hear that, that youth are participating in sports and they need to go outside the county and even south of the river to be able to participate, to have a facility that is appropriate. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see that we are, we are providing this service for our citizens and this opportunity for them to, to participate in a sport, even if they're under five foot tall.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
First of all, I think it's appropriate that a volleyball gym is being proposed by the tallest guy in the room. Just the other question I had, is, are you offering any kind of sand volleyball there, or is it just all court?
We, we plan on utilizing sand for training, but we don't have any plans to do in the outdoor.
Thanks.
Further questions or comments? Is there anyone else wishing to comment at this time? If you are, please come forward, and as I mentioned, come forward and kind of queue up there, so I can make sure that we get everybody covered who wants to speak. Once again, make sure the green light is on, state your name, and then proceed with your comments.
Hi, my name is Molly Moran. I am an employee of Flash Performance, as well as an athlete for Optimum Volleyball Club. I'd like to take this opportunity to present you my feelings on OVC and Flash, and how building this new facility will be such a great thing for the community and the people surrounding it. So this is my third year attending Flash, and I find myself here five to six times a week, either working, practicing, or training in the gym. I would argue that I spend more time here than I do at my own home. Flash has created a safe, home-like environment that always makes me feel welcome and safe. When I have a bad day or just need a break from stress, Flash is the place that I want to be. The Smiths and Tessa are very hardworking people and, who are caring and never fail to put a smile on my face. They also push me to be the best athlete and person I possibly can be. My intentions are to play in college for volleyball. I now know that it is an achievable goal with Optimum Volleyball and Jared Smith by my side. Optimum Volleyball Club and all the people associated with it have become a family to me. I want OVC to continue to grow so it can become a home to others as it is to me. I appreciate the time and consideration you have taken to listen to me today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Ben Watson. I am also a committeeman for Republican Party in Clay County, but I have to admit that this is the first I've seen of this. I wasn't, I wasn't directly aware, that's not your guys' fault, that's just me not being aware of it. I've done some cursory, look at it right now on my phone. I used to live north of that area for, I grew up actually north of that area, on a, off A Highway, so I'm very familiar, familiar with that intersection. Now, one of the problems we used to have with that intersection is it was a blind hill. Fortunately, thank God, they'd actually straightened it out and flattened it out, but they used to have accidents there all the time. People coming down that long hill, down A Highway, they would run into people going across 112th, so I'm glad that was taken care of. Sorry, I digress. One of the questions I have is I was looking at the high school, which is just south of there, they had multiple courts there. So why are, why are, why are we doing, why are we considering this? Does a high school not allow anybody to access, or is that the case maybe? Can they give people access? I know this is a commercial endeavor, but if we're gonna approve a commercial endeavor, that's fine, but is it kind of a little bit redundant if the school would allow it? I mean, it is a public school, just south of there, a mile or so south of there, they have six courts. You can go online and look at it, like I just did. So I'm concerned about that, I just want to know. In terms of the endeavor, I agree that it's probably a good idea. There are a lot of houses around there. If you look at the satellite photo, you'll see there is a lot of housing, and that aspect of it might be a good thing. I'm just saying that it kind of seems a little redundant with the high school having a bunch of courts as well, and a bunch of stuff as well. Obviously, that's for the, for the kids, but are they gonna allow, could they allow other people to use those courts when the school's not going on? I don't know if they allow it or not. That's the only thing I was wanting to say.
I think those are questions best answered by the applicant. I would just venture to guess that the demand is such that it exceeds what the ability for the school to, to provide those courts and the time for them, but I don't know that, so that's an assumption on my part. Perhaps if the applicant would like to address that, that point, that would be helpful. And just come on up to the microphone if you, if you would, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as gym space goes, it's, it's, Parks and Rec struggles every year to get gym space. Our facility now, we just have one court, and we have to turn people away constantly. We're unable to even fulfill the needs of our own business with one court. So as far as gym space goes, I mean, just in terms of time, there's not enough time for what the school can provide and what we need. And there are other factors involved, like the, the high school coach specifically there at Liberty North has an interest in club volleyball, and it's not in my club, so there's that factor, so.
Very well. Is there anyone else wishing to comment?
Hi, my name is Peyton Lutz, and I'm a student at Liberty North High School. I've been going to Flash for about six years now, and I've been a part of OVC since it first started. For me, OVC has been a place where I can relax and have fun, playing the sport that I love while becoming a better athlete and person all at the same time. Jared and Tessa provide a nurturing and positive environment where athletes can get stronger, faster, and better their skills at volleyball. Optimum is a place that I know I can go whenever I'm stressed or upset, and I know that I will have coaches to talk to and a good support system. At OVC, you know you aren't just a number to a business, but you are an important person and athlete. I have grown so much at Optimum in many different ways while also learning life lessons. It has made me a better player skill-wise, while also helping me to get faster, stronger, and jump higher. At Optimum, I've learned how to be a competitor, a good teammate, and a leader. I've learned important life lessons like time management, working hard, and communicating, and being part of a team. Building the new gym would help many people in many different ways. It would help all Optimum teams to get better skill training with more space and be able to get more time in the gym. It would also help us to get more teams, which would help more kids in our area to be able to play volleyball without having to make the long drive down to places like Independence and Lee's Summit. Overall, OVC is a positive club with good values, and building the new gym would help build the game of volleyball and make our community better with more opportunities.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Cindy Price. My husband and I, we have a daughter that plays for Optimum, but we're also teachers in Excelsior Springs, and I am a coach in Excelsior Springs also, and I can tell you with our gym space throughout the district, it's monopolized with others in the community, and just to be able to get that gym space is nearly impossible. I'm gonna skip through, I have kind of a thesis prepared here, and I'll give you the, the high points, because they've already kind of addressed a lot of them. But as teachers in the community, we witness kids all the time wearing a sedentary lifestyle, and providing the opportunity for workout space and conditioning and just working with kids and getting them active, I think is an important aspect of this. Let's see. Part of the reason that we support Optimum and continue to go back is not because of just the volleyball skills that our daughter gets, but the feeling of family that we get from Optimum itself. So she's visibly better, obviously, on the court, but that's just the surface of what Derek and Jared provide. Since joining Optimum two years ago, we've witnessed noticeable transformations in her both on and off the court. Not only has she developed volleyball skills under the guidance of Jared Smith and her other dedicated coaches, she has also grown into a more confident and disciplined young woman. The club's emphasis on teamwork, mental preparedness, and perseverance, and resilience has instilled invaluable life lessons that extend far beyond the volleyball court. Beyond her personal growth, the program has, has become an important addition to our family. The camaraderie among the players and families has created a supportive community that we are so grateful to be a part of, from cheering together during long tournament days, organizing team events, and fundraisers we've formed lasting friendships and cherished memories that we will carry with us for years to come. So we, we support and appreciate OVC's professionalism, organization, unwavering commitment to providing all participants with a safe and nurturing environment. I urge the County Zoning Commission to consider the broader benefits of this facility and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
My name's Giselle Fest, and I live at 1407 Lanette, which happens to be on the south side of A Highway, not too far from this facility. And as a, so I come from a, I'm a grandma, and we've had all the kids do all the sports and all that. This is, I come from a taxpayer's point of view. I am excited about this. I am thrilled about this. Here in, in Liberty, we just turned down a vote by 77% because the taxpayers did not want to have the burden on this. To me, as a taxpayer, this is exciting. We're having private industry do what private industry does best. They know how to make money, and they know how to do it correctly. They've gone through your process, and they've done what you've asked them to do. And as a private citizen, I hope that you endorse them and pass them through. We've got Montage that are coming in. Interest rates have gone up, Montage has not done what they're gonna do, yet. But if Montage comes in on that Plattsburgh Road, they're planning on putting all sorts of commercial property on this. This goes hand in hand with that property. This is gonna make everybody a better citizen, we're gonna have more money in our tax coffers. As a citizen who lives near here, I am excited and endorse this. Thank you so much, and thank you for bringing this to our Northland Committee.
I think it is worth pointing out, as I think was implicit in what your comments were, that this is a private enterprise effort, which is in competition, soft competition, I guess, with a governmental facility, and it, I think it demonstrates that in, in this marketplace, there is room for both entities to be able to not only survive, but, but hopefully to thrive. Sir?
My name's Don Comstock. My daughter is, this is her first year playing for Optimum Volleyball Club. She's played club for the previous six years, and up until this year, she was, she played for some coaches that weren't, I guess, developing their players and weren't, basically helped building them up. And she was pretty close to being on the verge of just quitting a sport that she loved. We just finished the first year with Optimum, and it's breathed new life into her. So she loves this club, she wants to play for this the rest of her years, and I can tell you, all the staff that is in Optimum Volleyball Club has the same enthusiasm and the same goals to build these girls up, so I just hope you guys consider approving this.
Thank you. Is there any other citizen wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none, is there any closing comments from the applicant? Very good. Commissioner Withington, unless there's a comment from anyone else, and I don't see anyone, you are welcome to make closing comments and to close.
I just want to say, I think this is a great project, I think it fills a need for the Northland, and I close.
Commissioner, if I may, on the motion, just, just to be clear, the motion is to approve with the box checked approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have restated the motion. Thank you for taking care of that. With that, please call the roll.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Abstain.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Before we go to the next issue, I just want to emphasize that those of you who showed up for this particular issue, you're certainly welcome to stay for the entire meeting as, and to come to any other meeting possible. I don't want you to feel as though that once your issue has been, has been taken up and, in this case, passed, that you somehow need to leave. Certainly, you're always welcome here to hear any and all business that comes before this committee in open session. So with that, that brings us to number 2024-165. That is Commissioner Johnson's, but if you would go ahead and introduce that administrator?
Resolution 2024-165 is approval of illegal immigration resolution.
Commissioner Johnson, I believe that is what you've been working on, so if you could go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, I'm gonna go real slow here, so we give some time for some folks to, to get So this resolution basically kind of has the commission taken a, a stance on illegal immigration, and the fact is, we've, we've kind of been talking about this for a couple weeks now. I'm actually very hopeful that we, that we're, hopeful that we'll have a unanimous, a unanimous endorsement of this. This isn't, there's a lot of folks, actually, everybody has, has had input on this. Several folks, three or four, starting with Commissioner, or President Commissioner Nolte, and Commissioner, actually, it was, is actually both Lawson and, and Withington, had, had all put pen to paper on trying to put a resolution together, and then the rest of the commissioners chimed in with different ideas. And this, what, this was brought to us last week, and we wanted to tweak a little bit more, there's some, a couple of words that some of the commissioners didn't like, so we, we played with those, we added, I think there's some language that Commissioner Withington had in his that we added to this, so. So basically, it's kind of a culmination, culmination of, of everybody's efforts here. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I'm going to read just the, the first two whereas's, it kind of gives you an idea of what it's about, and I'll read the resolves. So it says, whereas, recent news reports and social media posts have expressed an invitation to immigrants living in sanctuary cities such as Denver and New York to relocate to Kansas City, Missouri area, and Clay County. And whereas, many Clay Countyans have raised a concern of illegal immigrants, illegal immigrants coming to Clay County as a result of this invitation. And, and it goes on to list seven more whereas's, and those seven more whereas's are all simply just state and federal laws pertaining to illegal immigration, both entering the, the country illegally, talks about encouraging people to come here illegally, the laws against that, the laws against sanctuary cities, the laws against prohibiting, all sorts of laws regarding illegal, and you can read it for yourself, I won't go over all the laws, but we tried to make it not too political, just factual. And so we just stated the facts of the laws. And then we ended up with three resolves at the end, and I'll read those resolves for you. It says, therefore, be it resolved. It says, "Therefore, be it resolved, the Clay County Board of Commissioners declares they do not welcome illegal aliens." And I might point out, the word "illegal aliens" is used specifically because that is the legal term that's used throughout all the laws, the term "aliens." It's not, certainly don't want to offend anybody who doesn't like that term. There's a lot of different terms being thrown around that people like some of those, but that's the legal term that's used in law, so that's why it's used here. So they do not welcome illegal aliens. Clay County is not a sanctuary county and will not open shelters or provide services other than emergency services dictated by law to illegal aliens and/or undocumented immigrants. Clay County will continue to prioritize the needs of our local citizens. Be it also resolved, Clay County is committed to following the previously stated federal and state laws and any other laws pertaining to illegal aliens and their full enforcement by federal, state, and local authorities empowered to do so. And be it further resolved, Clay County respects the history of the United States as being a beacon of freedom and opportunity in the world. Clay County is a welcoming community to all immigrants who enter this country legally and desire to be productive members of our community. With that said, I move to approve 2024-165."
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-165. We're going to go into discussion, just to, for the adification of those present with the public. We're going to have a discussion up here and talk about it a little bit, then I want to allow time for any citizens who would like to also input. I think as we discuss it up here and we flesh it out a little bit, it will help inform your comments, and it may well provoke questions in your mind that you would like to address to the commission. So that is the way we will proceed. Commissioner Withington, I believe you are seeking recognition.
Yeah, you know, we spent three hours over two meetings discussing this. I think, what I heard was consensus from this group last week was that we were going to pass this, so I don't think we should waste anybody's time. I don't think anybody's going to say anything new. I think we should just call the vote and get this over with.
Commissioner, before I recognize you to call the previous question, you do understand that that cuts off all, and it does not allow any of these citizens to comment?
Well, I'm saying, I didn't, did I say I was going to call the vote? I said, I said we should, right, Jerry?
Okay. No, I was just wanting to make, I was trying to preempt, because once you make the motion...
I mean, they can still talk. I'm just saying, there's nothing else that I, we, last week, the consensus, and I apologize if any of you guys were misled to think that this was going to be some controversial debate up here and that this commission wasn't going to pass this. I mean, I apologize if that got out. I know there were some emails that were going around, but consensus last week was this thing was going to pass. So I appreciate you all coming here tonight. I planned to vote yes. I said last week I was going to vote yes, and everybody else up here said they were going to vote yes. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I did, I wanted to make sure that, I wasn't sure of your intention, I wanted to inform you.
No, I was just saying, consensus last week was we were going to pass this.
That's no problem. I was just trying to make sure the debate went smoothly. Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate everybody coming out. I think that this is a touchy issue. All of you sitting out there most likely have had family members in the past who have come here, and in fact, I know of a little Cuban woman sitting out there whose family came, and I know another lady whose daughter-in-law has gone through the proper procedure and becoming a United States citizen. So I think that it's, I think that it's imperative that we do include people, and I'm the guilty party for sending out the email, and I'm happy I did it, because I think all of you need to come to this meeting more, see how hard we work, and not patting myself on the back, but we all pull together, and we try to do the right thing for this county. I felt that this, when I first brought this forward, and Jerry first brought it forward, the very first two that came forward, I felt like this was an issue that we couldn't wait on. It was where we, as a county, needed to draw that line in the sand and say, these are the things that we feel are important. We're going to fight to keep the illegal people, regardless of where they come from, keep them out of the country, and support our own citizens and do all we can for them. So God bless all of you for coming and being a part of this. It's important to see that we have people that really care about this county. So thank you very much.
As we had our rather lengthy discussion at our last meeting, one of the things that I observed was that, in spite of the fact there's a variety of opinion on this panel, which is a positive thing, we need to hear all sides, and we need to hear all opinions to make sure that we make the, as informed decision as we can possibly do. In my opinion, I would go stronger, but then again, there are people here who would not go as strong. We have reached, I think, what I hope is a consensus. Would I like it to be stronger? Yes. Is it strong enough? Yeah. I can, I can, I will not be voting on this unless there's a tie. That's just the rules of our body. I don't, I only vote in the case of a tie. But I can support this because I think we've come up with something that expresses what we need to express. This was provoked by the Kansas City mayor making statements that were, I think, ill-advised. I'll be polite. And I think it's important that we express our opinions. This leads to a larger issue in my mind, and that is, we as the Northland, we as Clay County, need to make sure that we are expressing the will of our people. We are part of this metropolitan area, but we have our own distinct and separate identity. We want to work with the city of Kansas City and all of our partners in the metropolitan area, but we need to never be shy about expressing our support for the will and for what is in the best interest of our citizens. We need to always remember that we are here for you, and we are supposed to be supporting and forwarding those issues that will, in fact, be able to give you the most benefit and enhance this community to the extent possible. With that, are there any comments from the commission? If there are any citizens wishing to comment, please come forward. And once again, when you come forward, make sure the green light is on by pushing the button, state your name, and then state, make your comment. And if you could kind of queue up back there a little bit, that way I can kind of keep track of who wants to speak and make sure everybody has their turn. So please proceed.
Good evening. I'm Ally McLean. I'm the Cuban that Joanne Lawson's talking about. My family came here when I was four years old. We did it the right way. It's pretty much a lottery. We already take in a million legal aliens every year in this country. Guess what? When we got here from Cuba, I moved to Chicago. Chicago's a mess right now because of the sanctuary city status. Heaven forbid, I don't want that for here. You know, you talk to most people who came here legally, they're the first ones that will tell you, it's not a racist issue. It's not sustainable economically. It destroys law enforcement. It destroys every infrastructure. The damage that it's doing is astronomical to a country that we've all fought so hard. I'm retired from the DOJ. I still work with the DOJ. I mean, I'm sorry, but it's about law and order. We have enough to deal with. We need, like we always say, charity begins at home. We have homeless vets. What about them? And now we're going to worry about illegals? It's not sustainable. It just isn't, in any city, in any county, in any state. Look at the mess that we've got around the entire country. We just started Libre Initiative here in Missouri. You know, I'm in touch with, I've got the pulse of the Latino community. Every single person that's done it the right way has told you, and will tell you, no, we got to do it the right way, not bring illegals in. You know, there are some people on that board that came in as illegal. They were terrified until they became legal that they were going to be deported. We have a system in place. We have laws in place. Let's adhere to what we have, and let's protect what we have in this country. No, in Clay County, we cannot afford to be a sanctuary city, sanctuary county, sanctuary state. Every single one that's been affected has been destroyed. Like I said, I hail from Chicago. I see what's happening. They're in the airport, they're in the police stations. If you don't have the pulse of what's going on, then reach out there, because this isn't a racist thing. This is a fact that it just doesn't work. No, I don't want in Clay County. And guess what? Most of my Latinos don't want it either, because it's just not sustainable. So it's not racist. I think you guys are doing a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. If the next citizen would like to come forward to comment?
Hi, my name is Carrie Lonsdale. My husband immigrated when he was eight years old from England to the United States. All my kids are first-generation immigrants, and we've decided to take a stand as a family into different sectors of what we believe in and what we stand by. My husband has worked all of his life coming to this country. His dad worked all of his life, and I can tell you, not only by being in the higher tax bracket, paying the multiple taxes that we and everybody else in this room pay, this city, wherever you are, we have family in New York, we know what a mess that is. We came to Clay County for a reason. It was a smaller town. We moved from Olathe, Kansas. We have, and I appreciate all you guys working together honestly and meeting the minds, because you honestly are doing the work that we want you to do, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer and a person here that lives here. But we don't want our taxes going up, we don't want our healthcare system, I don't want drugs, I don't want people that are laying on my dime. In all of these senses and the values of the community that people long-term have lived in, this is a special community, and I just appreciate you guys for helping to protect that for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Jackie Thorstensen, Clay County resident. Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to request your support for this resolution as a witness of the strains in border states and other sanctuary cities the priorities should be for the citizens in Clay County, Missouri, without risking resources that are already in place. Approving this resolution would be an important step toward conveying confidence to your constituents and the city, or the citizens of Clay County. And as a citizen, I'm against any compromises insecurity that would confuse or make the appearance that Clay County is an open sanctuary county that is adjacent to Kansas City. And I want to thank each of you for pressing through, creating this resolution and approving it. Thank you, Commissioner Lawson and Commissioner Johnson, so much for, again, pressing through this. It's been, I watched the hours that you've put into it. Thank you very much.
Next citizen, please.
Ben Watson. First off, good job, guys. This is a great piece of work that you've done. It's good to see when, it shows that you have a touch of what's going on with the general public, which is great. We've all seen how the governor of Texas and the governor of Florida made us, made the whole country a border town, okay? Because he started farming those people out. Biden's doing the same thing, but he's doing it condescendingly with air flights, okay? The point is that I don't want them here in Clay County if they're illegals. If they're legal, they take the steps that they're supposed to do, the process that we have in place, that's fine. I am extremely prejudiced against illegal aliens, not because of their race, but because they're illegal. The moment they step foot in the United States without going through the process they're supposed to, they're illegal. They're illegal aliens, which means they're alien to our country. I'd like to say that I work with a guy who immigrated to the United States from Kenya. He's a great guy, he's a strong worker, wonderful person, and he immigrated, he went through naturalization, he got, it took him like six or seven years to get approved, but he did it. He did all that stuff. He went through the test, everything. And he's very proud of that, and I told him I was very proud of him for doing so, because he chose to come here. I was just born here. He chose to come here with his family. And I can tell you from conversations we've had, he is extremely angry about all this stuff that's going on. There's another gentleman I work with who is Hispanic. He is extremely angry. His mother and his sisters that are older than him are also extremely angry, because they went through the process to come here legally. And they're so upset that all these people just get free paths to come in. So what you've done draws the line in the sand, like it's been used tonight. That phrase is actually true. We've all seen Mayorkas just let people go through. There's no accountability. He was supposed to, supposedly got thrown out, but he didn't get thrown out because of the current regime is keeping him in power. Hopefully, that will soon change with Donald Trump. But in the meantime, we can do, from what you guys have done, you've taken good, correct steps to say, for them to say, you can't, you can't, okay? The line is here. You can't start dumping people in Clay County like you've done all over the rest of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'll be brief. My name is William Wayne. I live with my wife Susan at 1916 Carter Court in Liberty, and I've lived in Clay County a little over 20 years. Online, I saw where Missouri Attorney General Andrew Bailey said in a letter to Mayor Quentin Lucas, quote, "We are a nation governed by the rule of law," unquote. And he also said, "And there are, quote, 'laws that prohibit illegal immigration into our country and into the state of Missouri,'" end quote. U.S. citizens, and in my opinion, particularly elected officials who are lawyers and members of the bar and have presumably sworn oaths to uphold and protect our nation's laws, should in no way promote violating these laws. My experience with immigration is personal. Our daughter-in-law was born in Pakistan, was a Fulbright Scholarship recipient studying at Washington University, where she met our son. She graduated, returned to Pakistan, completing her scholarship obligations. She then legally returned to the U.S., married our son while complying with all laws. She became a naturalized U.S. citizen and voiced the oath of allegiance, which in part states, quote, "I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America." Oops. End quote. Perhaps Mayor Q himself should voice that oath. I encourage you, Clay County elected officials, to inform Kansas City Mayor Quentin Lucas that you and I and my wife do not support him in encouraging unlawful acts, specifically welcoming illegal immigrants into our county. Thank you very much.
Next citizen, please.
The last citizen, if you're lucky, right? Anyway, I'm Larry Yatman, and I live in unincorporated Clay County, but wanted to mostly, you know, thank you commissioners for working on this, and it sounds like you had some differences of how it should be worded, but I think you've all pretty well worked it out, is what it sounds like. You know, I guess I'm just in favor of wording it as strong as you think you can and putting whatever teeth you think you can into it, you know? And sometimes you need the hammer, and sometimes you're trying to sell them on it, right? But, you know, use whatever tools at your disposal to maybe try to keep some cities in our county from attempting to be sanctuary cities. You know, Joanne brought up a point, too. It's like, you know, if a city declares themselves a sanctuary city, you know, sometimes they don't really just stay there, and it does put a policing burden on surrounding communities, and nobody, you know, really talks a lot about what does that cost via, you know, maybe needing extra police staffing. But, you know, I was talking to Jason earlier, you know, in effect, we're almost all sanctuary cities, because it doesn't look like our police can actually enforce any immigration, you know, about, you know, I think Will Aiken thinks the best he can do is call ICE. Well, ICE would probably just turn around and let them go. So yeah, the truth is, is be better if our own guys could. Okay, fine, we pulled you over for a traffic ticket, but we see you're here illegally, you know, at least hold them for a bit, make them cool their jets, and think about it. But that's it, you know, you just do what you can do, and it sounds like you guys are doing that, and I appreciate it, and best of luck, all right? Thanks.
Next citizen, please.
Chuck DeFarcus. I spoke my thunder.
Yeah, I spoke my thunder.
I support everything I've heard. I'm first generation Hungarian. My father fought very difficult situations to gain interest in this country. I totally support everything you're proposing. My question is, which this gentleman brought up, is that the academy, we heard Will Aiken speak?
And he said to us that unless they commit a crime, there's nothing he can do. So my question to you is, how will you enforce this resolution? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you want to address that comment, or are we you?
Yeah, I could address that. And I had one more comment to make as well. So the enforcement side, so he's right, there's some limitations that the sheriff's department has. They're really after criminals. Some of these laws aren't even criminal. They're civil in nature. Some are criminal but can't be enforced by him. But what I would suggest we do is that if you do see some kind of violation, it's called the state attorney general's office. The state attorney general has the authority to investigate and enforce those state laws. And a lot of our state laws in Missouri mimic or are even more constrictive than than the federal laws. So there's a lot of state laws. And if you read through the resolution, you'll see some of those, all the ones that say RSMO on them, those are state laws. And so the attorney general of the state could deal with those and make sure the appropriate enforcement is taking place, whether it's criminal or civil. The one other comment I wanted to make is, and I meant to make at the beginning, last week, we talked about this and discussed it and somewhat debated it up here. And after our meeting was over, one of my senior colleagues talked to me after the meeting and said, hey, you're a little aggressive, in so many words, told me, hey, you're a little aggressive out there. Maybe you didn't need to be as aggressive as you were. And so I went back and particularly since we're all kind of on the same page, it's just, it was a matter of how it's worded. Nobody's against this, I don't think. I think we've all agreed, hey, we're not against this. It's how we word it. So I went back and reviewed the, the, the video from last week's meeting. And I'll agree, I was probably more aggressive than I should have been and came across as if I was going to, as if I was attacking my colleagues. So I wanted to publicly apologize to my colleagues for that because I didn't mean to do that. I can't promise I will never do that again. That's kind of my nature. But I get kind of passionate sometimes. But I apologize and I'll try and be better next time. And with that, I wanted to go ahead.
Go ahead. First off, I want to see if there were any other citizens who wish to comment. Okay, I'm just going to do a little bit of comment. And then if another commissioner wants to jump in, certainly we can do that. Then I will go to you to close if that sounds acceptable. First off, it was a spirited debate. I think, I think, you know, in spite of the fact that we sometimes do get carried away, I apologize, I appreciate the self-awareness Commissioner Johnson has. I think he was appropriate. We all understand that we have spirited debates. And I think that is, that is healthy as long as we can come together afterwards and come up with a consensus view. One of the things that was talked about were the existing state laws. I'm pretty familiar with them, having, I think, wrote them all, along with then Representative Onder and Chris Kobach. We put those together. We made particular care to stay within what the federal guidelines were. There is no authority for, for us to act on immigration law and actually pass criminal sanctions. So we were very careful to craft them in such a way that they were, they were compliant with federal law, which is of course the main authority here. That is not to say that these, these laws do not have some consequence when it comes to the sanctuary city, sanctuary jurisdiction laws, being found to be a sanctuary city, which the determination has yet to be made, would result in the loss of state funding. That is a very serious matter indeed. So while I, you know, we do not have the authority either at the state nor at the county level to levy criminal, criminal penalties for these violations. There are, this is certainly a serious matter. I didn't want anybody to think that this was simply a ceremonial kind of a thing. Being in violation of these laws does have impact on those who do violate it. And there are safeguards in place to make sure that that, that a violation of that sort is in fact found to be, to have, to have basis and merit in it rather than just work on somebody's accusations. So there are processes involved in this. And once again, I want to repeat what I said, and that is that while it was a spirited debate during this last meeting, I think that it showed really the quality of this county, this county commission and this board, that we were able to have those spirited discussions come through with something that everybody can can get behind, at least I think, I don't know if I can get behind it, but certainly everybody had their say. So we'll find out in a few moments when we go to a vote whether that is indeed the case. But I want to commend my colleagues once more for having a spirited and fact-based debate on this matter. And I appreciate the fact that so many citizens have showed up to, to hear us go through what, through this operation of passing this, I assume, passing this resolution. So please know that you are always welcome to be here. You're always welcome for our, our public meetings. And your input is welcome and you are being listened to. With that, I think, excuse me, Commissioner Carpenter, I was having trouble with the alliteration. Commissioner Carpenter, I think you wish to be heard?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I just want to say thanks to Commissioner Johnson, mostly just for, you know, chatting about the issue. I think, I think we all agree it's an important issue. Generally, obviously, I hope at some point the federal government does what it needs to do to secure the border. You know, it obviously causes a number of problems to not have any way of tracking who's coming into the country. And we got to get to the bottom of that. Mr. Johnson, I also appreciate, you know, I think you took to heart some of the minor changes that we talked about making and made those. And I'm grateful for that. You know, I have had some concern about the way this issue might be used. In other words, as a political weapon to, you know, go after Kansas City or go after Mayor Q or go after, you know, President Biden, which we heard some of this evening. And so I've had some reluctance to participate in that piece. Because I, on the policy side, totally agree. We should not be a sanctuary county. Kansas City should not be a sanctuary city. People should not enter the country illegally. We should secure the border. Hundred percent agreement on all of those things. We should respect the rule of law. Rule of law means we shouldn't be a sanctuary county. That's my view. That being said, what I've heard tonight, that gives me a little bit of pause, I'm going to vote for the resolution tonight, in part because I want to show that bipartisanship can exist. I appreciate the changes that you made. And, you know, that's what I want for my country. I want the parties to figure out how to get along and come to some common ground, even though I'm not 100% comfortable. I'm going to vote yes anyway. But I also heard tonight, taking a shout at Mayor Q again, and I just want to go on record before I vote. Well, let me, let me back up, actually. The mayor, within a day of making his initial tweet on this matter, made it abundantly clear he's not talking about bringing illegal aliens into Kansas City. He has said repeatedly, he's talking about folks who have documented work permits. One of my old colleagues in the legislature, a guy named John Patterson, he's currently the Republican floor leader in the House. He'll be the next Speaker of the House, says he's looked at the plan, he's talked with the mayor and his folks, that he agrees that they're only talking about legal documented permitted workers and that he is good with the plan. That's my former colleague, the future Republican Speaker of the House. So in my view, that's where we're actually at in terms of the policy being discussed. That being said, if at some point in the future, the mayor or anybody else comes out in favor of making Kansas City a sanctuary city or Clay County a sanctuary county, or any variation thereof, I will be opposed. I am opposed. I don't think we should do that. But if this ends up getting used, and I have some concern after this evening, then maybe it will, as a political bludgeon to go, you know, fight some culture wars or be anti-Mayor Q or whatever, and people go out on social media. I don't even do social media, as you all know. I don't even look at y'all on social media. No offense. Love you. All six of you. You're great. But I don't even look. Okay? But, but I just got to say, you know, I'm going to vote yes. But I don't want to be used as a pawn in some political game here, frankly. And so if this turns into some big social media thing or whatever, and the media, you know, news reports, whatever, in which this gets portrayed as that, you know, the seven of us have taken some shot at Mayor Q and we want to keep this fight going and we want to have a big partisan fight on this thing, I'm going to distance myself from that very strongly. And I, and I hope that folks don't use it that way. Because if we're, if what we're talking about is a good faith concern around the issue of sanctuary city or illegal immigration, I'm on board. I'm with you. I agree. It's a problem. We should address it. We should follow the law, rule of law. Must matter in this country or we don't have a country. Totally agree. But I don't want to be used as a, as a political pawn. And I hope, I hope you all don't make the choice to do that. That's my sincere request. Hope, obviously, you get to do what you want. But I'm going to vote yes, because I respect the work that Commissioner Johnson did. And because generally speaking, when you look at the resolves, bottom line is, the resolves say, we shouldn't be a sanctuary county and we should respect the rule of law. And on that, I agree. Thanks.
Before I go to Commissioner Johnson, are there any other commissioners who would like to make a statement before we go to closure on this question? Seeing none, Commissioner, you are recognized to close. I close. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
I.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That comes, that brings, oh. That concludes our regular agenda for this evening. The next item on the agenda, our county administrator comments. Abidustrater?
Just one, and that is, the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, May 23 at 6:00 here in the chambers.
That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington, we'll start with you and work your way around the table. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. There you go.
Just want to say happy birthday to Brandy. Brandy's in the back, but she had a birthday on Monday. So happy birthday, Brandy. Also want to say thank you to MoDOT. Had several constituents in North Kansas City call me. There was some graffiti on the underpass at 35210. And so they contacted me to get that taken care of. And MoDOT was able to take care of that today. Took them less than a week. So that was impressive. Also want to say thank you to John Davis. Is he not here?
Behind the post there.
Want to say thanks to John Davis. Had several people contact me about the trap shooters building after the tornado. And John was very quick to answer those questions. And then also, I had a really good meeting today with Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver about the riverfront in Harlem. His staff is going to start looking at some things. And they are looking at how to transfer ownership of the wet side of the levee to Port KC from Harlem all the way to Harris. So we're making progress on the riverfront.
Commissioner Lawson.
Nothing.
Commissioner Wagner.
Yeah, two things. First, as it did come up earlier this week at our Mark STP meeting, at least from the state budget, the I-29, I-35 split has survived with $53 million. We, we hope that will survive any possible veto attempt. I know there's many folks trying to make that happen. But just wanted to recognize a huge investment in Clay County infrastructure is proceeding along. Then, as it is graduation week, or it's starting a whole run of graduations, my wife will be at the one at Oak Park tomorrow. I just want to congratulate all those students for all their hard work, wish them well, and, and wish their parents well as well. And also to remind those kids, you're not bulletproof yet, so don't get yourself into too much trouble after graduation is over. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson.
So this is National Police Week, if you don't know. So shout out to all my fellow colleagues, men and women that have or currently are serving in law enforcement capacity, particularly to, I don't think anybody from our sheriff's office here, but to our sheriff's deputies. I appreciate the work you do. Now, there's, there's way too many names on that memorial wall in Washington, DC. I have several family members back there right now for that memorial that took place. But there's way too many names on that wall of police officers that have been killed in the line of duty. And we need to do what we can to not only prevent that, but to remember those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice on our behalf. So again, I appreciate and thanks to everybody who've, who've taken that, taken that job on. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Carpenter. I want to join Commissioner Johnson in, in his observation about the, our law enforcement officers. Our law enforcement officers are what stand between us and some very unpleasant people out there, some very bad things. So I think we need to make sure that we thank our police and our other emergency workers, but obviously, most especially our police officers. They are what stands between our families and harm. And I think we should constantly be aware of the fact that without their selfless service and without their sacrifice, our lives would be immeasurably less pleasant and more dangerous. So thank you so much for those who, who put on a sidearm, who put on a bulletproof vest and go out there. Not many of us are in a profession where a bulletproof vest is required. And it's not for comfort or decoration, but it is because they go about the serious business of keeping us and our families safe. With that, next on the item would be executive sessions. Commissioner Johnson?
I would move that we go into executive session per RSMO 610.021, subsection three for personnel, subsection 12 for contractual and subsection 21 for computer network operations.
Motion has been made to go into executive session for personnel 610.021, under the Missouri statutes, parentheses three, contractual under parentheses 12, and computer network operations under 21, and to adjourn therefrom. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
I.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
With that, we will go into executive session under the previously cited Missouri statutes and adjourn therefrom. Thank you very much.